It's six.
Before we call the meeting to order, let me share the mayor's regrets that she's not here tonight. She is under the weather. So at this time, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Larson?
Here.
Councilwoman Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Mayor Walter, absent.
We stand for a moment of silence and continue standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item five, call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I have two seats for call to the public. Peter Caloris.
Hello, everybody. Thank you. Vice Mayor Woolridge, councilmembers. I'm here today to invite everybody. I'm part of the Florence Heritage Foundation. And we have done a few events in the past. We did a magic show last year where we raised about 1,700 bucks for the community. $1,000 are promised to Sammy Joe at the Charles Hardy Saloon. And we've also given $700 to Elizabeth at the Rapp Saloon for a paint job. We are in the, uh, planning a golf tournament for December 15th. And I would like to invite the council, the town, everybody to come out. The monies that we raise, a portion of them do go back for grants and to help out the town. And hopefully, we could work in partnership to move the town forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. We always like to see people doing positive things in the community. Thank you. Mr. Jerry Ravert?
Uh, my name is Jerry Ravert and I live in the Mashia House on the corner of Church and Ruggles. I really don't have a formal statement like I usually do when I address the council. I came tonight hoping to get a status report of what is happening with both the saloon and the QN building. Both properties are needing stabilization work. It's very obvious. I guess I would ask the council that maybe at a future meeting soon, we could have some sort of a presentation or an open discussion about what is going to happen with these two structures. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We can get with staff, with Mr., with Ben, Mr. Bitterman, or, and they can give you the update on what's going on at this point. But thank you. Do I have any other, any other call to the public items if anyone wants to come forward with anything at this time? If not, we're closing call to the public. Item six, A, presentation by Joseph Carl Holmes regarding their product and building in the town of Florence. Mr. Larry Harmer?
Vice Mayor, members of the council. It's with great pleasure that I'm able to introduce two members of J. Carl Holmes. John Jeffrey, Vice President, and Choya Sossini, the Vice President of Sales and Marketing. I will let them go into more detail, but we will tell you this will be someone new for the downtown area. And that the current status is that building permits are ready to pick up. With that, I will introduce Ms. Sossini.
Hi. Thank you for giving us some time tonight to introduce ourselves to you. Joseph Carl Holmes originally launched in 2019. And shortly after the company was launched, it was acquired by a major public builder. So fast forward seven years to today, the original founder, who is Joseph Carl Mulak. We locally know him just as Carl, has relaunched his name stake company. And this time around, the company is locally owned and privately funded. Um, when Carl started deciding that he wanted to relaunch the company, he toured the valley looking for areas of future growth in communities that had finished but undeveloped lots, where at least few homes were constructed so that we ensured the infrastructure was in place and working. Um, we picked a community here in Florence. It's called Villa Adelada. And we have five communities across the valley with over 500 lots. Our community here will open for sales in January. We will offer four open concept floor plans ranging from 1,300 to 2,200 square foot. We have three single level homes and one two-story home. All the homes have two-car garage and offer three to four bedrooms. They have three elevation options for each plan and several different color paint schemes, as well as three different front yard landscaping packages that will be included. That's all we have tonight. Do you have any questions?
Any member of council have questions? Karen?
Do you have a price range for those homes?
We don't have official pricing yet, but our focus is keeping this housing very attainable to a wide variety of people. So we will probably be starting somewhere in the 170 to 190 range.
Any other council?
Yeah, uh, will you have an HOA or is this a non-HOA community?
It is an HOA community.
Any other council member? Yeah, I saw him, but I want to get counsel first. All right, Mr. Billingsley?
We are so excited to have a partner, partner in Carso, uh, Joseph Carl Holmes and that they're coming to our community. We've been working very hard for the last couple of years to try and encourage infill on existing residential lots, especially in the old town area. And it's been tremendously difficult to obtain interest. Although from a staff perspective, we feel that they're going to be highly successful and that there is a demand and a need for housing in this part of Florence. The, uh, the HOA that they're speaking to is a pre-existing HOA. This is a pre-existing subdivision. And I believe you've purchased 31 lots?
Correct.
In that subdivision? Uh, I've seen the stuff they've put together. It's going to be very attractive and I think it'll be very attractive to buyers in Florence. And we're super excited to have this partnership. And I think it's really going to benefit the town of Florence. So thank you again, Choya and, uh, Mr. VP for coming down today. Todd, uh, to, to help us out. And we look forward to being a partner with Car, uh, Joseph Carl Holmes.
So do we. Thank you.
Thank you. And I agree with that. Welcome to Florence. And we definitely are always working on getting those vacant lots filled in in the community, in all parts of our community, but especially in the downtown area. So thank you very much for picking Florence. Item six, B, is a presentation on the Veterans Memorial Project. Brian Hughes?
Good evening, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here to give you an update tonight on the Veterans Memorial Project that we've been working on for about a year and a half. In 2017, a group of veterans from Anthem Sun City expressed an interest in having a memorial here in town at a meeting that Councilmember Anderson had attended. Shortly thereafter, there was a group of those veterans, as well as some other citizens, who kind of started meeting regularly to kind of discuss what the options would be. One of the first things that they wanted to do is, um, what we needed to do really was identify where a veterans memorial would go. So we took a, a look at all the available parcels that the town owned and kind of narrowed it down. And what we ended up coming up with was that right across the street, we had this beautiful plaza that needed further improvements. Um, and we thought we could do that very cost-effectively. So, um, so we decided on that as a location and thought it was a prominent location here in town. And we already get a lot of people coming to the new facilities and taking pictures of the, the town of Florence side out there. So again, it worked out that it would be a good location. Um, from there, Councilmember Anderson approached his son, who's a landscape architect. And he volunteered to donate his services to do the design documents. And I believe I mentioned that at a previous update. So, um, he was able to go through and pretty much put together a couple of concepts for us to look at on that plaza. And, sorry. And this was one of the first ones that we ended up refining. This is one of three that the committee chose. And we, uh, we tweaked it a little bit, but it takes advantage of that center planter that was originally supposed to be a fountain and that we can put some concrete plinths in there with the logos from the military branches and along with some flagpoles. As we were kind of working through the, the design, we decided that it made more sense to push the flagpoles off to the west end of the plaza. And so we were able to get three flagpoles in there, one for the United States flag, State of Arizona, and then the POW MIA flag. And that it would work out much better for events to have that kind of on a level surface as opposed to, excuse me, elevated in that planter box. So that was kind of the, um, the tweak to the design. And Brett was able to make those changes for us and, and give us some actual documents that we could submit to the planning department and also our building official to review. So we also, um, once we kind of decided on that, um, we went forward with just some conceptual drawings here that were photoshopped just to kind of reflect kind of what we were thinking, not exactly. Um, but, uh, what's not shown here is the concrete plinths in the middle. There'll be five of them. But one of the things that we wanted to add to the design was a center sculpture that would be either patriotic or something that would represent the, the veterans. And so the Arts and Culture Commission is kind of taking the lead on that part. And they're going to be selecting an art piece to go in the middle to kind of complement and finish off the, the Veterans Memorial. Um, as you can see in the picture, the flagpoles will be again on the west side of the plaza. And during events, we can set up chairs and things, um, all along the concrete pavers there for people to sit in during, uh, presentations, Veterans Day, Memorial's Day, Memorial Day, things like that. So again, so one of the things we wanted to do with the flagpoles is we want to get with the wind that we have here, some very high wind resistant flagpoles with internal halliards to keep the, keep it from banging against the pole in the wind. And also it'll prevent any vandalism and kind of deterioration of the ropes that help raise and lower the flags. Let's see. Along with this, there'll be a dedication plaque for donors. One of the things we're working on right now, just kind of kicked off, was the fundraising phase to raise funds to pay for all the various elements of this. Uh, it's going to be, our cost estimate is between 65 and 75,000 dollars. Uh, but we're hoping to get some of that in kind. Uh, we've talked with the National Guard folks. They're willing to help with the construction. There's also an electrician here in town who's volunteered his time to help wire up the LED lights that'll be illuminating the statue and the flagpoles. So right now, we're kind of in that, that fundraising phase. And here's another, um, kind of conceptual picture of what it would look like. So, like I said, we just kicked off the, uh, here's kind of a timeline of where we're at and where we hope to go. We just kicked off the fundraising phase last month. Really kicked it off this past weekend. There was, uh, we're working with the American Legion and they're willing to take donations, tax deductible donations through their organization to be put towards the Veterans Memorial. And they were at the Anthem celebrates the art event this week at the American Legion table. And so we're trying to raise some funds. We also had some funds in the CIP budget this year. And so we're hoping not to expend all of that. Uh, we're hoping that the donations kind of add up and that we can just maybe do some matching funds. But if there is any funding left over, one of the other things we identified is seating out there on the plaza, perhaps some picnic tables with some umbrellas so that people can take advantage of that year, you know, throughout the year, not just at special events. But we'll wait and see. That's kind of the, the lower priority. The main priority is again, the, the flagpoles lighting, statue, things like that. The goal, as you can see on the timeline here, is to kind of procure everything in the early part of next year and then do construction in March, April, and then a dedication on Memorial Day, uh, May 26, 2019. So I think we're going to be on track to do that. It all depends on how our, our donations and fundraising comes in. But we can make that timeline, I believe, as far as the overall construction and get that finished. And I think the people on the committee are committed to that goal. Everybody seems pretty excited at this point, but as far as where we're at. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if Councilmember Anderson would like to add anything.
Well, I was just going to say, I talked to Mike Chappell, who was manning the table in, uh, Anthem over the weekend, or Saturday. And he said that there was, people were quite excited over the, the project was, you know, they're excited to hear about it.
Good.
So, uh, I think we're going to be able to get a lot of donations if we just get it, get the fundraising going.
Yes. And we do plan on having a table at every event over the next few months so that we get some visibility. So that'll be Junior Parada, Christmas on Main, Home Tour, a lot of the things. Anything we can get in front of people between now and the end of March to help with that fundraising effort.
Thank you. Great idea. I like that. And thank you to Mr. Anderson and to your son for his pro bono work. And thanks in advance to those people who have already committed to do in-kind services. We appreciate that. But I like the layout. It looks really nice. Any other members of council have any comments or questions?
I was just going to say this. I've heard the same feedback that everyone's very excited about the memorial and, and how we're able to support our veterans. So it's something that I hold personally valuable. So I, um, I would appreciate that. And I love the architecture and everything that's, that's come so far. So I'm excited for it to open. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Item six, C, presentation on Florence Gardens Phase Four and Five Project. Chris?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. I even practiced that before I came up here and still messed it up.
So you shouldn't have practiced. Just go with it.
Just, just go. Tonight, a brief presentation, kind of a, while the project is not 100% done, we wanted to kind of give the council an update on Florence Gardens Phase Four and Five. There's been some questions in the community of kind of where we're at in that project and kind of celebrate where we're at on this project. When I first was hired, this was a, um, high priority project. And we started off immediately working through, again, getting on calls, under contract, working with getting geotechnical work done before the project was started. And then eventually working on getting the design services and design part of the project done, utility, uh, locations and relocations if necessary. Uh, this is a culmination of a multi-year effort by the town. Um, when we first again started this project, the, there were, there were two main issues. The pavement was in poor condition. It obviously showed signs of distress. But maybe even more importantly than that was the lack of a true drainage system. The project had a very, very minimal inverted cross slope. So that's where the center of the road is depressed. And that was the way the project was designed by the original engineer. But it didn't have much of an inverted cross slope, as well as it did not have any concrete running down the center of it, the concrete valley gutter. This is a, um, this is typical. This is an industry standard. If you're going to convey water, you convey it on concrete and not on the asphalt. So we looked at that, um, getting that rectified was a huge part of this project. Early on, I can't say how many months when I was hired, uh, we had a large rainstorm. And I can't even say it was a 10-year event in that, in that size. It wasn't a big wet, but it rained very hard for a short period of time. Uh, myself, Engineering Inspector Mario Grahava, Curtis Williams, and Town Manager Brett Billings, we were out on site and, uh, we got soaked. Uh, it was the day of an ADOT meeting and, uh, we were soaked that day. But we actually got some very good indications of how the conditions worked in the field. And, uh, you'll see pictures of it kind of later on in the fact that water did not move off the pavement. It stayed on the pavement and it was in very poor condition. So here are some pictures early on of the beginning of the project. Uh, to the, on the right is the after and to the left is the before. Uh, for the audience, you probably have to squint a bit. The before picture shows obvious signs of distress, lots of cracking. And again, a lot of this was chip seal and there were some small areas of asphalt concrete. Another picture showing again the inverted Crown Road to the right and now the concrete valley gutter. And this is what you would see in a properly designed project, conveying water down the concrete, not the asphalt. That will mean that the road will last a lot longer versus if we were to have just repaved it, which could have been an option, would have been the cheaper option in fact. But the idea is that the town would more than have to sit there and make up for it later on when the road started to fall apart again. And again, on the left, a chip seal road, on the right, uh, an asphalt road with a concrete valley gutter. So much improved design. Uh, here are some, some pictures of some of the construction that went on. So every 50 feet, there were little waste pads poured, again, an industry standard to support the valley gutter so that we didn't have over time, the valley gutter kind of sinking into the road. So one of the things that was pointed out in this project for it to be considered a success was again, working with the residents and the HOA. Um, so that was probably the most critical part of that. And I want to again say that the HOA worked wonderfully. They actually, we had construction meetings weekly and the HOA attended those. We gave weekly updates. They posted them on their website. So on that part of the project, uh, public participation was key. And we also planned this project to occur during the low season. So there weren't people trying to fight to get to their house or to a medical appointment. That was one of the key things, a strategic decision to do it in the off-season. Uh, here's again a slip form for the concrete valley gutter. So that made very consistent. Uh, this isn't, this is not necessarily an industry standard. They don't always have this type of equipment. Sometimes these are poured and finished by hands. We were lucky enough to have a contractor who actually has the slip forms. So what you're seeing is a machine pouring the concrete rather than human beings forming it and then having to finish it. This provides a very consistent slope throughout a project so that we don't have bird baths on the valley gutter or areas of low spots where water collects. I'm sorry about the bird bath. So this is a picture of the valley gutter after two days of curing. Again, this is the, this is the key element to this project is the drainage itself. Here's another picture looking west. Again, you can see obviously, um, lots of patching on the right side of the before picture and on the right side. Uh, again, a very nice dark road with a concrete valley gutter. Same kind of picture as you can see, um, while we couldn't mimic every angle of the camera or the shadows, the intent was to try to take pictures in the same area. Now here's a picture again. To the left is after a rain event. And you can see the water just does not move. It sits in the concrete, I mean, in the asphalt. It eventually absorbs into the subgrade and causes the road to fall apart. And this was the, this was the biggest concern is designing a road that conveyed the water off of the road. Unfortunately, we have not had any pictures of the construction project since. But I have been out there during the rain and it moves the water quite nicely. Um, there are again some low spots in the concrete pavement and the asphalt pavement. And those are actually being mitigated presently. I think that we have two areas left. So they're going in there implying a sand sealant to level and then they'll be applying a sealant for the whole road after the road cures. And then again, this will be done in the off-season next year. Here is the construction equipment again. This is the day of the paving. Here's another picture of the same, uh, area where we have water again, standing and not moving off of the pavement. So you have two conditions. The roughness of the pavement itself, which correlates to, uh, just think about it. Something that's rough is not going to have water run off on it as easily as a nice, um, freshly waxed car. The water will come off of it much easily. And the concrete provides a much smoother, uh, surface for the water to run off of. And a positive drainage. Both of those are key. Another area again, water not moving versus again, the finished product. Similar, um, once again, these are, these are all pictures of showing where the water was not moving and, and versus the finished product. Again, a much improved project there. Uh, project timeline, we put it out to bid on November 2017. Bidding closed November 19th, so again, right before Christmas. And then the project started the 28th of April, 2018. And those are some dates there for when they, each phase of that project finished off. Again, we had a project Phase Four and a project Phase Five. We are currently finishing off the project. Last week, they were locating, uh, utility valves so that again, we can shut the water off in certain areas. Then this week, they've been doing some sand sealing and we're in the process of negotiating a finished, um, project completion with the contractor as we speak. Here are some fun facts. Approximately 48,000 square yards of old asphalt were removed. Approximately 38,000 square yards of new asphalt were installed. Um, the original project again was not truly asphalt. We were just comparing apples to apples, but it was not. It was again, a chip seal. I think the last time we chip sealed that was Dan Cisco's second year here. So I think the last time we chipped so that road was about 20 years ago. So there had been some time since the last maintenance project went on. Approximately 7,600 square feet of old concrete removed and approximately 100,000 square feet of new concrete installed. So that's all that concrete valley gutter in there. And again, I'd like to take some time here to thank some people that were critical on this project. Unfortunately, Christian Collins had a little bit of an incident moving this weekend. So he is at home, um, I guess, getting better. Small incident moving. Um, Maury, um, the Florence Gardens Community Association Manager. Again, it is great to see somebody working with the town and the community he represents, attending the meetings, being part of the solution, posting things on their website or whatever board that they're using. Uh, the EPS, one of our on-call engineers was a project engineering design and vice versa was our contractor. I believe that completes my update. If there are any questions?
I have a question. Uh, where does all this water go to?
There are different areas. So, um, again, under state law, we cannot increase the amount of water that is the resultant of a project. We can only keep the flows historical in nature. And so all these areas, they went back to where they originally. So some go down to the ADOT. They all eventually get to the ADOT highway through their system.
Okay.
There is no retention when this project was designed, uh, 70, these Phase Four and Five, it was in the mid 70s.
So we're dumping it on ADOT. That's good.
Yeah, so a lot of, a lot of older communities, even stuff I think built in the 80s is not self-retained in Florence. Um, so yeah, that ends up getting to the highway.
Any other questions? Mr. Billingsley?
Mr. Bill, anything?
Just to finish this off, very proud of our team for completing this project. This project had been on the CIP for many years and hadn't been completed. Not only did the bids come in for the project less than what the engineer's estimate was, but I don't know if you noticed from the dollar amount, but our team brought this thing on time and under budget. And a lot of that has to do with Mr. Chris Solis and I want to mention again, Christian, because he was the project manager on this project on a day-to-day. This is first big projects that he's managed. He took it very seriously. And you know, thanks also goes out to council because one of the positions that allowed us to hire for in this last year was a professional project manager and Christian fulfills that role for us. So it's, it's coming together to make a better Florence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. And I know the residents were happy about that. Item seven, a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item seven A, authorization to contract with Truly Painting and More LLC for repair and painting services in the Town Hall Council chambers in an amount not to exceed $26,981. Seven B, authorization to contract with Arizona Generator Technology, also known as Gen Tech, utilizing a cooperative contract through the, through the state of Arizona, contract number ADPS 15-079205 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 for maintenance of generators. Item seven C, approval of a contract with Arizona Office Technologies for the purchase of seven multifunction copy machines. And item seven D, approval of accepting the Register of Demands ending September 30th, 2018 in the amount of $1,492,028.35. That is a consent agenda. Is there any member of council who would like to pull any item from the consent agenda? Any member of the public? If not, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item eight, new business. Item eight A, resolution number 1683-18, discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona, authorizing the town manager and town attorneys to file an amicus curiae brief, I'm not a lawyer, I hope that's close to it, brief with the Arizona Court of Appeals and any other courts regarding Van Gilder versus Arizona Department of Revenue and also supporting the passage of the Pinell County Regional Transit Plan and associated half-cent sales tax. Mr. Ben.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. This request is a simple request on behalf of the Pinell Regional Transit Associate, or Regional Transit Agency, PRTA. We have with us tonight Andy Smith as well, who is the general manager of the PRTA. The request before you tonight is to simply allow staff to file what is called an amicus brief in common legal terms, so we'll skip the second Latin word, which no one wants to pronounce.
See, you made me say it, I want to hear you say it.
You're braver than I. The amicus brief is simply a, basically a letter of support. The town would file with the courts that are hearing the case. In this case, if we were to file an amicus brief, we would join with other towns and cities within Pinell County that will likely be taking similar action to us tonight, as us tonight. All of the towns and interested parties in that sense would then join together, perhaps even with the League of Cities that is reviewing the same request, and then file basically a, a letter to the court saying, "We are supportive of the Pinell Regional Transit Plan and the, the sales tax that passed and list the reasons why." This is not something that would have any ongoing legal costs for the town. There's actually no cost at all. It is simply just filing the, the paperwork. Amicus briefs are known as friends of the court briefs and they're called that because in theory, you are providing additional information or additional insight to the court and to the judge that are, that are hearing the case. And so again, just, just by matter of background, this is in regards to Proposition 416 and 417 that were passed last year in November 2017 election. 416 was the regional transit plan. 417 was the sales tax associated with the regional transit plan. Both passed in Florence by greater margins than they passed countywide. In Florence, Proposition 416 passed by a 64 to 36% margin and Proposition 417 passed by a 57 to 43% margin. So those were larger than, than the countywide numbers. What, what we are asking for tonight is really just the, the permission to file these amicus briefs to join in with, with any other interested cities and towns and the League of Cities should they choose to do so through their resolution process as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just want to say, I thank you for clarifying. I spoke with Brent regarding this. I personally don't like lawsuits. I don't like lawyers. I don't like courts, any of that stuff. So I just want to clarify again that this isn't going to tie us into anything and Brent had clarified that for me, that this isn't us really getting involved in another lawsuit for anybody who's watching and might be a misunderstanding or not clear on what this is. So I appreciate you clarifying all of that and, and getting us on that same page.
Thank you.
Karen.
Are we collecting the half-cent sales tax now?
Yeah, so the, the judge allowed, council member, well, the judge allowed the collection of the sales tax to continue. That is being collected and placed in an escrow account at current and so none of that money is being able to be drawn down to pay for expenses or to pay for the projects that were approved and as part of the plan. But that money is still being collected and it is sitting in an escrow account.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You good? Did you want to?
Yeah, and if you-
Did he want to add anything to it?
I just wanted to mention that Andy Smith is here from the RTA tonight.
That's who I was talking to, I wasn't talking to-
Okay.
I forgot his name though.
Said there's 6.2 million they've collected.
I'm sorry, I have forgotten your name, but Andy, did you want to add anything?
No, I, I, just what Brent was going to say. We're actually, like Ben was saying, we collected 6.6 million. We're about two months in arrears, so this is as of September.
I know, it's amazing that they don't want to, the voters to speak, but so be it.
It's a public forum, I'll stay there.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any other questions and I will need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolutions 1683-18 as presented here tonight.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 1683-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight B, under new business, ordinance number 665-18, discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinell County, Arizona declaring certain real property hereafter described surplus for use by the town and authorizing the sale thereof and declaring an emergency. Mr. Billings.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, some time ago, a few months ago, staff came before council and said that there was a number of surplus properties that the town had acquired through taxes or other means in the past. And we got the direction to go ahead and get rid of some of those parcels that are, that are useless to us in terms of right-of-way or development interest. Before you tonight is a property located at 202 East Suaro, that's in the Caliente subdivision. It is a lot that we acquired in 2009. We had that property bench appraised and they determined what a value was on the market. We took this property to market and we are, there is a offer to purchase it for full value and so staff is recommending approval of this sale. We'll be coming back to you at the next meeting with our second one.
So we like to hear, we need to get rid of that property. Any questions from council?
Did we advertise this property for sale?
Yes, it was on the MLS. We went through a real estate agent, et cetera.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? No, if not, I need a motion, please.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 665-18.
Second.
It has been motioned and second to approve ordinance number 665-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item eight C, under new business, discussion approval/disapproval to award a contract to Apache Underground and Excavating LLC utilizing pine strawberry water line replacement and water facilities improvement, construction work, job order contract dated October 18th, 2018 in an amount not to exceed $813,696 for CIP WU-38 Water Line Replacement. Chris.
Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. Some, some key elements to this project. This project will be providing additional fire flows, in particular, for all the areas surrounding the Florence K8 Elementary/Middle School. They are currently, the school district is currently working on a design and has made a submittal on an addition to the gymnasium. That gymnasium must meet fire flow requirements, so in order for this addition to, to be built and to be occupied, we need to provide adequate fire flows. This project was already planned and scheduled. It just needed to be expedited. That was one of the reasons why we thought that using a JOC contractor provided us the best dollars and coincidentally, the same contractor was awarded an invitation for bid very recently by the council for a similar water line project, proving that they are not just a JOC contractor, but they are a low bid contractor as well. So both contracts were obviously done competitively, one invitation for bid and one for a JOC. We did shop this to both JOC contractors, to the pine strawberry contractor. Once again, Apache Underground was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. This project includes both an eight-inch and a 12-inch line, so some of the downtown loop will also be extended, which is benefit to the, to the residents as a whole. And this project fits within our budget constraints for this year.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from council?
Of course, I've got a question.
The 12-inch, the 12-inch main, does it hook into another 12-inch main?
Yes, sir. The project that ended on Phase One of the downtown 12-inch line ends at Collingwood and Elizabeth, this project will, which is not coincidentally the Circle K project. So once again, the council approved that project. We did Phase One in-house, which was done successfully, but a challenging project to do in-house with our staff. But it was done and we will be extending on to that project there. On the other hand, we are working on, which was awarded the previous council meeting, the CDBG portion of the project, which is on the north side up by where I work in the Public Works Building at 425 East Ruggles. So the following year, we will now be connecting those two projects through Phase 3A and 3B in a future CDBG project, which will finish the downtown. It was always going to be a three-phase project due to budget constraints. It is about, approximately about a 1.7 to 1.8 million dollar project.
Good work. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve awarding a contract to Cool, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page.
Item C.
I make a motion to approve awarding a contract to Apache Underground and Excavating LLC utilizing pine strawberry water line replacement and water facilities improvement, construction work, job order contract dated October 18th, 2018 in an amount not to exceed $813,696. Bid equals $678,080 plus a 20% contingency of $135,616 for CIP WU-38 Water Line Replacement.
Second.
Motion, multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Oh, you're still up next, right? Item eight D, discussion approval/disapproval to award a contract to Coolidge Engine and Pump LLC to outfit well 2B in an amount not to exceed $239,573.46 for CIP WU-23 Well To Be Outfitting.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, a project that was, I guess, underway but not moving when I first was hired here was Well To Be. It was drilled, cased, and then sat dormant. And this was a project that everyone kind of had to collectively get together to figure out what would be the most cost-effective way of moving forward. That's very common when management changes. Thankfully, town gathered bids, examined all the possibilities and determined that it was a substantial savings in, in the, for the future of Florence to go ahead and outfit this well. We were actually really shocked at the prices that we had received. This well allows us to have redundancy for the purposes of just maintenance or in the event of a catastrophic failure for well one, serving all of the Florence Gardens, the five parks area. This project was competitively bid through an IFB process and Coolidge Engine and Pump was the low bid provider. Again, an invitation for bids under state law. I'd like to mention as well that Coolidge Engine and Pump obviously is located in Coolidge, which is in Pinell County, so it's always nice when we're able to keep dollars within the near areas or the county. I'd also like to say that the people at Coolidge Engine and Pump have been working with this town for quite a long time and they are a valued resource and it's kind of nice again to see that they were able to obtain this work through a competitive invitation for bid. So we put out a project like this, I believe we reached out to 17 or 18 people. So we sent out a list, a large list, to all of the vendors that we could have, plus we advertised and we had one additional person that we did not contact. So it's a, it's a, it's a quite a lengthy process to, to make sure that again, that the dollars are spent and we're getting the best utilization of those dollars. With that, are there any questions?
Any members of council have any questions?
John, of course.
Yes. I know you've been working on this for a long time, Chris, and it's really good to see this project get brought forth. What about the tanks up there? The storage tanks, what, what condition are they in?
So we had an assessment earlier, I'd say we say about 18 months ago. And when I first got here, the tanks were limited to a capacity of 18 feet, essentially above finish grade. They were considered structurally insufficient for anything larger than that. So we did a study through one of our on-calls and we had them structurally evaluated and that allowed us to raise the surface, the water surface elevation to 30 feet above finish grade. And that's, they are, they are fine. A registered engineer signed off on that elevation and so for that water surface elevation, they are, they are structurally in good shape. We are still looking at evaluating what our future projects are going to be. That is obviously a project in next year's CIP, I think it's 1.46 million dollars. We have been studying on, we've been doing some pre-design this year to ensure that we have all of the parameters. It's quite a sophisticated system, the way that that works, because there's, there are, there are two pressure zones in that area, but the way that they work was not 100% understood by staff. So we had to figure that whole thing out. There was no intellectual knowledge on that portion of the project because none of that was a municipal project. We had seen some of the old drawings, but now we have a very good understanding of that project. So to answer your question, the storage tanks for the water surface level are in good shape.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Brent.
Two things to add. Number one, four years ago when I got here, that hole had sat here for several years. It had been drilled, it cost a million dollars to drill that hole and it sat for several years and wasn't equipped. And if I remember right, the budget amount that was in there to equip that well was $1 million. We have a bid now and are moving forward for $240,000 to complete a project that should have been completed a number of years ago. So significant cost savings, it's going to be a quality product and, and it's, it's going to get done. I think that's, that's a kudos to Chris and- I think that's, that's a kudos to Chris and his team, to EUSI for their assistance as well as part of those projects. Secondarily, to answer the council member's question more directly, the one storage tank there is five years old, so it's basically brand new. The taller storage tank was recoded and repaired, repairs were done four years ago. So both tanks are in very good shape.
And I agree with you. I'm glad that we can keep it local to the money local, that's always nice. There are not any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve awarding a contract to Coolidge Engine and Pump LLC to outfit well two B in an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-six cents for CIP WU dash twenty-three, well two B outfitting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under new business, item eight E, discussion, approval, disapproval of authorizing the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the maintenance of well number four on behalf of the town of Florence without further order of the mayor and council of the town in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Chris, it's your night, huh?
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, this is kind of a unique project in the fact that well three B and four are co-located at the Public Works Building at four twenty-five East Ruggle. Well four has not been pulled in at least twelve years, and it was in poor condition. Once we pulled it out, we started the brush baling and cleaning of that well. At the same time, we have to bid separately the actual physical rebuilding of the pump. That takes some time. Every day that we have that pump out of the ground presents a problem if something were to go wrong with three B. This part of the town doesn't have that level of redundancy, and to be fair, no town does. Florence is in a great position. Most towns do not have the amount of redundancy that we have, but we never want to be in a position where we have something down for an extended period of time and then something else breaks, and it does. Things do break in the Water and Waste Water Department. There's no way of getting around that. So the idea is that we are still going to follow our policy one hundred percent to this T. We are going to do an invitation for bids. We already advertised this invitation for bids. We had our pre-bid this morning on the project, and we will be culminating again that with a bid opening. The only thing is, we're asking for permission to save a month on the back end rather than taking it back to council to award this project through the normal protocol to get your approvals of how the town manager just execute those contracts at the end of it. This is not something we plan on doing in the future every single time, but this is kind of a unique thing, and we thought that, again, this was the responsible thing to do, is to have the opportunity to reduce that month of time at the end of the con, at the end of the bid process to take it back to council. It is not changing the way we do business, it is not changing the way we advertise. Again, Joe Jarvis is making sure, he holds our feet to the fire to make sure that we're following all the purchasing policies by the town and under state law.
Thank you. Always, there's always some exceptions, that you have to do things that are not normal, and it's important that we have that well up and running. So, I have any questions from any members of council? Yes. I think they're all surprised on this end, John.
We've talked about this well before.
Okay. If there are not any questions, may I please have a motion?
Make a motion?
You go ahead, John.
I make a motion that the, that we authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the maintenance of well number four on behalf of the town of Florence without further order of the mayor and council of the town in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Item eight F, discussion, approval, disapproval of accepting Commissioner Chappelle's resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and appointment of planning and zoning alternate Dwayne Pro, I'm sorry, Dwayne Prolex to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. We're going to be sorry to see Mr. Chappelle leave. He's been a great volunteer during his time, but sometimes you just can't hold on to those commitments, but we certainly appreciate what he has done and the time that he served. Mr. Billingsley.
Miss Vice Mayor, members of council, I think you said about all that needs to be said. The only thing I would add is, I think that the council was very wise in previously adding an alternate so that that person could come in and fill in if someone resigned, and I want to tell all of our viewers at home, we look forward to you putting in applications to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission, because I would very much like to add another alternate now in case we get another resignation, because I think this worked very well. This is a board where we've had problems in the past filling it in an immediate way, and I encourage anybody watching on TV or in the audience tonight to fill out an application to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission so that we can have another alternate.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
I would just like to echo our thanks to Mr. Chappelle for serving. I know that he intends to continue to be active in other areas where he feels comfortable.
Okay, with that, I will take a motion, please.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance of Commissioner Chappelle's resignation from Planning and Zoning Commission and appoint of planning and zoning alternate Dwayne Prolex to the commission with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight G, discussion, approval, disapproval of accepting Councilmember Galen's resignation effective October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and instructing staff how to fill the vacated seat.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, as you're aware and as you've seen in the packet, Councilmember Galen has decided to step down from the council. She's served this town for decades as originally an employee and then as a council member, but also as liaison to the Historic District Advisory Commission and both police and fire public safety retirement boards. Essentially, you have two options tonight. Either we could continue forward with the six-member council until the appointments of the council electees on December sixth at our ceremonial meeting, or you could ask staff to come back at the next meeting and bring forth, bring forth one of the council elects to be appointed as interim council member for one meeting before that December sixth meeting. From talking to Lisa this afternoon, she told me that it would be appropriate to, if you did want to place one of the council elects on the council for that meeting, it would be appropriate to take the highest vote getter, and I believe the highest vote getter is in the audience tonight. But we can't ratify that individual this evening, it would have to be on the agenda at the next meeting.
Any comments or discussion from council?
From my perspective, I would just assume we go through the ceremonial agenda that we have scheduled for the first meeting in December, rather than put one of our new electeds through one meeting and then taking a permanent place in December.
I think, I would like to, go ahead.
No, I was just going to add that the mayor appoints the liaisons ordinarily, so she's not here this evening, and so I think we, I agree with Karen that maybe we ought to wait until next year to, to take care of this.
Yeah, I think it would be a disservice to the newly elected people to, to take that away from them, the ceremonial event. I think that's such a special moment to be on the board together, to be sworn in. I would, I feel it sort of lessens that if we, and we're so close, I think that this wouldn't have an impact to the town, it wouldn't, we can all handle it where we're at right now until that's taken place in two meetings, so.
I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Well, can we make a motion not to accept Becky's?
Can we have a motion to, to approve the accepting?
Approve, or whatever you want to do with Becky's?
I make a motion that we accept Councilman, Member Rebecca Galen's resignation from the Florence Town Council effective October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen and instructs staff to wait until the normal installation of the council.
I'll second.
It has been motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, managers' report.
Madam Vice Mayor, members of council, as you can see, this is the longest managers' report that I've typed up out of the last three months. I'll go very quickly through it. First off, I want to thank all of the volunteers for our second annual Florence Makes a Different Day, which we had on, on October the twenty-seventh. We had over a hundred and fifty people volunteer, and it was, it was another great effort. We filled a roll-off in the parking lot, we made ten thousand meals that day, we redid a number of our improvements in the downtown, we picked up trash, there was a whole lot done, and it couldn't have happened without the volunteers, without the support of the council, without Allison Feliz, who helped to coordinate that event. So another large success, and a lot of happy people over that. One of the things that, that I wanted to share with the council and with the public is, I had an opportunity to go to Los Angeles October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. I have to thank the Chinese delegation, specifically the China Council for Promotion of International Trade. They paid for, for my conference membership, and I have to thank Pinale County for paying for my travel as well as my hotel room to go on that trip. It was, it was an honor for me to go and represent Arizona, to go represent Pinale County, to go and represent the town of Florence, to, one, celebrate the thirty-year anniversary of the U.S. and China's agricultural trade mission, and secondarily, to attend the trade summit that existed. I made a lot of contacts, I got to talk to a lot of influential people from both the U.S. government and individuals representing the Chinese government, and there may be some, some opportunities for economic development with, with China after being able to attend this event. So I think that's a pretty neat thing, and I was honored to be able to attend. I also have some good news regarding the risk pool, our insurance. I think everyone here understands that we belong to the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool and Board. Our premium is going down. That's, that's a credit to our, our staff, that's a credit to the folks that, that manage this organization and all of our department directors, and it's something that you don't see happen much when, when your, when your insurance goes down. And thank you, Scott, for all of your, your representation with respect to that. I talked about the fire open house at the last meeting, so I'm going to skip that one. We had a presentation tonight on Florence Gardens four and five, so I'm going to skip that one. And lastly, I guess I've got two more things. One, we had a very successful Halloween Fright Fest last week. This Saturday is the Pony Express Ride. I believe that's at noon where they, when they get here, Brian. So if you want to see the Pony Express come into town, or you would like to mail mail with the Pony Express, Saturday is your day. We also have a drop-off box in Town Hall. Junior Parada is coming up November twenty-third through twenty-fifth, and the parade is, is on Saturday the twenty-fourth, if I recall, and Christmas on Main is going to be Friday, December the seventh. The last thing that I have is, I received this, this last week, and that is Family Volunteer Day, sponsored by the Florence Chamber of Commerce, Points of Light, United Way, the town of Florence, and the Florence Unified School District. It's an opportunity to give back to your community. It's November seventeenth from ten AM to two PM at the Florence Community Center. There is going to be literacy kits put together and sock puppets for children, et cetera, to be used at the Florence Unified School District, so I hope that folks can come out and participate in that event. That's all I have.
Thank you, Brent. We have the department reports in your packet. Are there any questions for any of the department heads? Comments? No? Okay, we are at our second call to the public. Is there anyone in the public that desires to have something to say tonight? All right, no call to the public. How about call to the council for current events only? Mr. Anderson?
Well, I guess I can start off by reminding everyone, if they haven't watched television, that tomorrow's election day.
Oh, really?
And if you haven't voted, please get out and vote. And I want to thank Public Works for the stripes on Hunt Avenue, Hunt Highway. Thank you. Chris, where'd he go? He's gone. Anyway, there was a citizen input and question about the striping on Hunt. Thanks, Ruth, for bringing that up, and I don't know if you noticed it or not, but the no-passing lines have been extended in several areas out there now. I also attended the Fire Department banquet this week, and it was an outstanding deal. I don't know what else to say, but you guys really put on a nice show. Thank you for inviting us. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, I'd also want to commend the fire chief and all the firemen. That was really a nice program, and the retirement for Jeff. I also want to let people know that Brent, he didn't bring this up, but I think it's outstanding. Last year, we did the twelve-month period, which ended in September, we had two hundred and thirty-two single-family permits issued. The state averaged fourteen point nine percent a year ago. We averaged nineteen point six, which is a lot faster rate than the statewide average, so I just want to let people know that Florence is growing. Two hundred and thirty-two new homes, that's, that's quite a bit. I just want people to know that we are moving forward and everything, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Mrs. Wall?
The Make a Difference Day was really impressive. If, if you didn't get a chance to participate, I was really impressed with the cohesiveness of the community that came together and worked on the various projects that were conducted that day. Probably most impressive was the ten thousand meal packets that were put together. There was a certain amount of competitiveness among the three assembly lines and the chatter that went back and forth, and the challenges were, were a lot of fun, besides the loud music that was playing kept us moving pretty fast. So thank you to everyone who had a part in putting that together and organizing it. Kristin did a great job with her part of that, and I know John was kind of the electrician of the day, and so thank you to everyone. I'd also like to mention the Smithsonian Traveling Exhibition that's coming to town. It's, it's a pretty big deal. It's been traveling all over the state, and it will be coming to Florence November seventeenth with a preview that evening, I believe. Jennifer, you correct me if I'm wrong. Yes? The twelfth?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay, okay, that's, I wasn't sure about the time, thank you. But... But it will be at the McFarland State Park, I believe, and then the Historic Museum will also have a piece of it. And I think maybe even the Suter House will have an involvement. Several events that will go on between the 17th of November and December 30th. So I'd encourage everyone to get at least a few opportunities to participate and view that exhibit. Last but not least, our fire chief and myself and quite a few others in the community have been involved for quite a while in trying to get three historic fire trucks restored that are currently owned by the Historic Museum. And rumor has it that the first fire truck is about ready to roll out, and we've been working on trying to get a date for that ceremonial rollout. And then the hope is that that truck will be in our Christmas on Main Street Parade. So keep your eyes open for that, and we're all excited to see that coming back to town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
Yes, so I just have some things in general I wanted to talk about. Some of the initiatives that I have been focusing on is ensuring that we have a positive work environment that goes beyond pay and benefits. So I just wanted to first thank Brent for putting things on the agenda, like when we congratulate our Public Works Department for doing work projects and giving ourselves a pat on the back when it's due. I think that when we do that for our employees and we give them an opportunity to sort of shine, to show what they've done, it helps foster that positive environment. So I just wanted to say thank you for putting that on the agenda and for giving them an opportunity to present that project to the public. Some of the other initiatives that I find very important is creating a sense of community and community engagement. And I've had an opportunity to go to the firefighters' event, go at a fight night, Fright Night, I say that time three times fast, as well as, obviously, Make a Difference Day. I was on the committee and a part of that, and I've seen how well the community comes together, and the camaraderie, and the enjoyment that the community has had participating in those events. So I love the momentum that we've gotten with that, and I love to see the engagement that's come because of that. Let's see, also, I just wanted to bring to light, one of the initiatives that we had talked about is I had a citizen complain about our calendar online, and that they wanted to go to different meetings and commissions, but they didn't know when they met, and they found that some were getting canceled, and they didn't have proper notification. And I was really proud to report that I had spoken with Ben and he and Brent, and we'd come up with the idea of updating our calendar so it's more interactive, as well as a potential subscription notification for meetings and potential cancellations, so that someone could even get a text message for when those meetings would be canceled or when the meeting's going to take place. So we're working out the bugs on that, but I'm glad to see that we're getting two steps ahead on that. So just looking forward to all the things that are coming and all the things we've already got going, so that's all I've got. Oh, and don't forget to vote. So important.
I don't know how we could forget tomorrow's election.
I know.
I'll be glad when it's over, personally. No, but I really don't have anything else to add. Glad to hear about that insurance premium decrease. That's always a good thing. And thank you for all the department heads and all the other staff, town employees, for doing all this great work. In the Halloween Fright Fest, I never saw so many people and kids in my life. They all couldn't live in Florence, I know. There were a lot of people. It was funny. And we're always thankful to the community who volunteer their time to keep the community going, because without the volunteers, we would be so lost and in trouble. So we really appreciate all the volunteers who give their time to help Florence prosper and to continue to be a great community. So if there is nothing else, we need, if you'd like to adjourn, I'd like to have a motion. Oh, and let's wish the mayor gets well quick, too.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.